All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. For our invocation, we'll have a moment of silence that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance, and we will have our veteran of the month.
Mr. Commissioner, we don't have to be silent with prayer, I can deliver.
Well, I will allow you to come and say a prayer for us, Mr. Mickey Garber.
Yes, sir.
And that will be followed by our very own.
Pledge allegiance, I can lead you in that too.
No, we have our very own veteran of the month, Ms. Jamie Montavo will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. You got me all flustered here. Number one, because you want to say the prayer, but number two, you interrupted the meeting. But we're gonna overlook that.
Thank you, sir.
Because prayer is important. So please, sir.
Yes, sir. Blessed art thou, Lord our God, King of the universe, who awakened us this morning from eternal sleep. Blessed art thou, Lord our God, who sends rain from the heavens. Blessed art thou, Lord our God, with rain from the heavens who brings bread from the earth. Blessed art thou, Lord our God, King of the universe, who with the rain brings fruit from the vine. With all these blessings, let us say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Garber, and that will constitute your two minutes for the public speaking. You know it had to be a catch too.
You're dreaming again.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our July 2nd, 2024 regular business meeting. The first order of business would be the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments during this time?
Commissioner Hambrick.
Uh, yes, I'm looking for it. Um, I would like to pull Resolution 2024-163.
What item number is it?
Item nine.
Okay. And you're asking to remove it from the agenda?
To remove it, yes, so we can get further information.
Okay, okay, the motion is to remove Resolution 2024-163, authorizing Clayton County to enter into a master solar energy procurement agreement. I will second that motion. Uh, go ahead with the question.
That's removed from the entire agenda?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I just wanted clarification, thank you.
All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Are there any others? All right, here and now, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
Our next item is our presentation for our veteran of the month.
All right, this one ought to be real good. Veteran of the month, one of our own, U.S. Army Staff Sergeant Jamie Montavo. Jamie Montavo, a native of Newport, New South Virginia, embarked on a remarkable journey of service and achievement from a young age. Enlisting in the U.S. Army immediately after graduating high school at the age of seventeen in July of 1999, Jamie dedicated eleven years to the nation's defense, attaining the esteemed rank of Staff Sergeant before receiving an honorable discharge in September of 2010. Her military journey commenced with rigorous training at Fort Leonard Wood, Missouri, followed by specialized instruction as an information technology specialist at Fort Gordon, Georgia. Stationed in Heidelberg, Germany with the United States Army Medical Command from 1999 to 2004, Jamie served as a senior information systems operator-maintainer, showcasing her technical prowess. Transitioning to Fort Drum, New York from 2004 to 2007, Jamie assumed the pivotal role of automated data processor, security team chief within the First Brigade Combat Team, 10th Mountain Division, including a deployment to Baghdad, Iraq, where she demonstrated exceptional leadership under challenging conditions. From 2007 to 2010, Jamie served in Holmes, Pennsylvania with the U.S. Army Mid-Atlantic Recruiting Battalion as a U.S. Army recruiter, excelling in recruitment and leadership. Jamie's commitment to personal development paralleled her military service. She earned a Bachelor of Science in Computer Information Technology from the University of Maryland in 2011, augmenting her academic credentials with a project management undergraduate certificate in 2018, and a certified government chief information officer designation from the University of Georgia's Carl Vinson Institute of Government in 2021. Furthering her education, Jamie completed an executive MBA from the Terry College of Business at the University of Georgia in May of 2024. Congratulations, that was this recent. Throughout her distinguished career, Jamie garnered numerous accolades, including the Iraq Campaign Medal for her service during Operation Iraqi Freedom, the Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, and the National Defense Service Medal. Her exemplary performance earned earned her the U.S. Army Gold Recruiter Badge with two set fire stars, the Superior Award for MedCom Information Management Soldier of the Year in 2003, among other awards and recognitions. Beyond her professional accomplishments, Jamie finds fulfillment in family life as a devoted wife and mother to her ten-year-old son. Actively engaged in community service, Jamie serves as the Third Vice President for the Georgia Government Management Information Sciences, Georgia Chapter. Since January of 2015, she has contributed her expertise to Clayton County's Department of Information Technology. In her leisure time, Jamie indulges her passion for cooking, enjoys quality time with her family, and energizes herself through Zumba. Zumba. You gonna do some of that for us when you come up? Let's honor and recognize our veteran of the month, U.S. Army Staff Retired, Jamie Montavo.
All right, group on the head three, one, two, and three.
I mean, it'll be a new people.
One, two, and three. Last time, one, two, and three.
Thank you.
Come on, Mike.
Now you know.
Don't stand up, Mr. [inaudible].
All right, we good? All right, group, and just one second. There you go. On three, one, two, and three. Again, one, two, and three.
Our next presentation will be honoring the service of Mr. Warren Bond Senior. This is presented by Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
Yeah, before presenting this, I would like to say that Dad was very special. Anyway, I'm really gonna miss him doing my hair.
We didn't pay him for that.
Fixing my collar. No, that's just how he was, and he has trained the others very well, because now they do the same thing, especially Junior here. I mean, you know, before he takes the picture, I mean, he makes sure everything is correct, and he has trained you all well. So, um, anyway.
I'll add to that. Is that, um, I want to say that Clayton County gave the opportunity to my father sixty-two years ago, entrusted him with taking the crime scene photos. And for the next sixty-two years, we have done that. And with my crew that'll be up here in a minute, when my father was still here, it was a hundred and sixty-two years of experience in what we do. Now we got ninety-five plus, and I hope to continue that for another, you know, twenty or thirty years.
Okay. And the plaque reads, "In loving memory, recognition, and appreciation, we honor Warren Bond Senior, founder and photographer of Warren Bond Photography, for sixty-two years of outstanding commitment, dedication, and service to Clayton County, capturing the heart, history, and amazing moments throughout our community, one snapshot at a time. Like each photography, we shall cherish you and your unmatched public service always. Clayton County Board of Commissioners." These guys, same thing. They've learned. Now they move. I don't know if they do anybody else like that. Maybe I'm the only one that's messed up.
Mr. Chair, the board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, before I take a motion to approve the consent agenda, two items I would like to privilege of. First of all, our Commissioner-elect, Elena Reeves, is in the house. I thought I saw her a second ago. Was she here? Yeah, she's here. Stand up so we can recognize you. Commissioner-elect Elena Reeves, thank you for being here. And secondly, I would like to yield the floor for a second for our clerk, Courtney Russian, to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As many of you know, I unexpectedly, unexpectedly lost my mother a few months ago. Her birthday is this Thursday, July 4th. She loved watching these business meetings and never missed one that I facilitated, so I thought it would be fitting to say a few words in her honor. My dad and my brother couldn't make it, but on behalf of the Russian family and myself, we would like to express our deepest gratitude for the unravering support and condolences during this time, with a very special thanks to the Board of Commissioners, especially Chairman Turner, Vice Chairman Davis, and Commissioner Hambrick, as well as COO Dietrich Stanford, Marcy Davis, Tanya Tucker, other departmental heads, county and BOC staff, and lastly, the constituents that also reached out to me. We appreciate each and every one of you who have extended their kindness in honor of my beautiful mother. I just want to say thank you all.
All right, so at this time, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
Mr. Chair, our next item is item number eighteen.
Our first is board appointment. First one is for the Public Facilities Authority. Pursuant to the board's request adopted through Resolution 2024-21, the General Assembly passed House Bill 1242, creating a Clayton County Public Facilities Authority. This authority may issue bonds for public projects such as improvements. The bill went into effect on May 1st, and for the initial appointments, two members shall be appointed for a term of three years, two members shall be appointed for a term of two years, and one member shall be appointed for a term of one year. And I believe we are, it's District 2 selection Commissioner Hambrick, and I think it's for the two-year term. Do you?
Is it the two-year term?
We did the threes. We took the threes, so we're on the twos.
Yes, I do have an appointment. I would like to appoint Mr. Jaymon Kearney.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Housing Authority. James Fambro's term on the Housing Authority expired on May 7th, 2024. The new term is for five years, beginning immediately and expiring on May 7th, 2029, so full board appointment. Are there any recommendations? All right, let's hold that for next meeting. You got it? Okay. Next board appointment is to the Tourism Authority. Gabrielle Johnson's term on the Tourism Authority expired on April 30th, 2024. New term is for four years, beginning immediately and will expire April 30th of 2028. This is also a full board at-large appointment. Anybody have a recommendation? All right, hold that one as well. Board appointment to the Greenspace Land Trust. Libby Thornbush's term on the Greenspace Land Trust Board expired May 5th, 2024. New term is for four years, beginning immediately and expiring on May 5th, 2028. I would like to reappoint Ms. Thornbush to that board. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next board appointment is Greenspace Land Trust. Alexis Lee's term on the Greenspace Land Trust Board expired May 5th, 2024. New term is four years, beginning immediately and expiring on May 5th, 2028. Full board appointment. Any recommendations?
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Ms. Alexis Lee to the Greenspace Land Trust Board.
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes maximum time limit to speak, with a total time of twenty minutes per public comment. Please remember, comments must be limited to matters on the agenda. Over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction, speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency. Speak clearly into the microphone. And speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Alexis Alexandra.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Alexis Alexander. I looked at the agenda, and I had a couple of concerns and a couple of questions.
Speak, speak into the mic, please.
For number three, it is on corrections landscape. The amount that is allotted for that is over a hundred thousand dollars, which is over eight thousand dollars a month. And for that to be the corrections department, I just question whether or not those allocations could be used a whole lot more beneficially. I know that there's trustees that actually work over and clean up the parks and rec departments, and it would probably be nice to have them to maybe do some of that along with some training, so that they can get some skills. When they get out, they can use it to benefit themselves, to take care of themselves. For number four, that was for software service, and that software service, they were referencing a contract that was actually approved five years ago. That company was just incorporated in 2024, and they're liaisoning with A1 Services and also with the Mexican Institute to provide them. So I found that to be quite interesting. The contracts for three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, all of those contracts have very little accountability regarding how funds are being spent, because it's redelegating authority to different chiefs, and then those persons have, they have the capabilities of allocating funding and approving funding under seventy-five thousand dollars, which, that's a lot of money.
Your time is up, ma'am. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Mickey Garber.
You be sure to start my time at two minutes. Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Today, my comment is on litter, again, but litter of a different kind. What was yesterday's campaign sign is now today's litter. And it is the responsibility, no matter if you won or lost, to get those signs up. It's not the responsibility of code enforcement. It's not the responsibility of the prisoners. It's your responsibility. You paid to have them put out. You should get them taken up. Thank you very much. I still got a minute and ten seconds. Let me say this. Whether you won or lost, Chairman Turner, I see that you ain't got any friends, and so let me just say this. I'm still your friend. And we could turn lemons into lemonade, and we could go on the comedy circuit, and you could be the straight black guy, and I could be the doofus white guy. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right. David Hamrick.
Madam Clerk, again, condolences from Chairman, Vice Chair, David Hamrick, Clayton County, for District 3. This is a subject I've approached a month or so ago, and it bears repeating. In two days, there will be celebrations across the land. The anniversary of the beginning of a new country will be acknowledged. This country began with citizens willing to address the tyranny and lack of self-government imposed upon its people. These were our original veterans. The rights we have today are not given to us. Those veterans who put their freedom and safety in danger stood up against anger, aggression, and hatred, so that we can enjoy what we have now. Our rights are inherited. That's right, inherited, not given. As an inheritance, it is on us to protect and defend what we have. It is also on us to thank and remember those to whom we owe so much. Currently, even as our veterans are on free soil here in the U.S., some are prisoners of their own minds. PTSD, a mental health disease, has trapped some veterans and refused to set them free. Even with the money been allocated, some still suffer. I ask that those who are setting off fireworks to think of others, and to not be filled with so much absorption of self, but to think and remember the reason for the season. Also along with this, HB 451 has also been passed to deal with PTSD for our first responders as they are affected, and must be given any and all help and gratification for what they do. Remember, there are so few do so much for so many. Thank you all for your time. I wish everybody a good, safe holiday season. Be careful July 4th, and remember our animals. David Hamrick, Clayton County, for District 3.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Before I ask Mr. Reed whether or not we need an executive session, former Director of Clayton Center, Dr. Lee Adams, is in the audience, and he has some special guests with him. I would like to introduce him to us. Y'all, please come, Ms. Works. Please come to the podium. Dr. Adams, who we have with us?
Good evening, everyone. I have with me tonight, I have our board chair, our lustrous board chair, Ms. Khadija Works, and also I have Ms. Barbara June, who is now our interim CEO of the Clayton Center Community Service Board. She has served there as the Chief Operating Officer for the past four years, and she has, I won't date her, but I said how many years she has with the state with DBHDD, but she's, I think, an excellent choice and would be a great continuation of service of Clayton Center. I'm still around, if you need me, dare to just help out where they need me, but Barbara is your go-to person along with Ms. Works, but just wanted to introduce her to everyone so people could put a face with the name.
Absolutely, and I appreciate you introducing her to the board. Ms. June, would you have, like, say any words?
No, honorable, but I will say I appreciate Dr. Adams' leadership, and we're gonna continue on with the mission and vision that Clayton Center has to help our residents here.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate the work that you do as well, Ms. Works.
Thank you so much, and my condolences to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Come on, child.
Mr. Reed.
Come on, Mr. Reed, come on, Mr. Reed.
You all had a vacation last time, so.
I guess it's asking too much for two in a row?
Yeah, yes, it is. Executive session on litigation only.
On what?
Litigation only.
All right, so motion going to executive session for litigation.
So moved.
I'll second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Everybody have a goodie? Madam Clerk, are you ready?
I'm ready, Mr. Chair.
All right, motion to reconvene.
So moved.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Hamrick. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed, please take them together.
All right, first is a settlement agreement in the matter of Jody White, on the one hand, Alexis Edie, Clayton County Board of Commissioners, Clayton County, Georgia, on the other hand, related to an accident that occurred on November 2nd, 2022, and that is in the amount of eighty-eight thousand dollars. The next is a, I'm sorry, the next is a settlement agreement between Gabriel Aries and Victor Hill, Jelani Foster, David and Victor Hill, Jelani Foster, David Evans, Clayton County, Argonaut Insurance Company, Saguac Claims Management Services, relating to the civil action case Aries versus Victor Hill at all. Civil action file number 121CV03588. And this is related to an incident that occurred at the Clayton County Jail on or about February 5th and 6th, 2021. And that is in the amount of $5 million. And actually, I think there may be, that's it.
That's it. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Are there any questions on either of the items? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. Have a great evening.